Okay, good evening, everybody. It's 6:35. We're gonna call the meeting to order. To my right tonight, we have Christopher Conti, Veronica Debonese. To my left, we have Rich Simple and Jake Morrison. Ken Buckland to my immediate left, our town planner. Myself, Jim Akabachi, clerk and acting chair this evening in the absence of our regular chairman, Nazir Al Qalasi. First thing we have in front of us is some meeting minutes from August 12, 2020. I have reviewed them. I am prepared to sign them as clerk, as written. I just need a consensus of the board. Have you guys had a chance to review them?
Yes.
Somebody wants to make a motion to approve and as presented and seconded, we can move along.
All right. I couldn't hear you that good.
I'll make a motion.
I need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of August 12.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a first and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously. The minutes from last week, or two weeks ago, are signed and filed. Next order of business, 2211 Walmart Cranberry Highway and South Toby Road, release of landscape performance bond. This was in front of us at the last meeting.
That's correct. This is a $20,000 bond that was put up for the landscape for a period of five years. I reviewed the landscape plan against the conditions of the parking lot as they are now and found that there's, there are dead plants in the, in the landscape areas. And I'm gonna have to contact Walmart and determine whether or not they want to have the, the performance bond used to replace them or have that, replace them themselves and receive the...
So, based on that, you're not ready to release it? You want to continue this?
That's correct.
Do I have a motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
I have a first and a second to continue the matter of releasing the performance bond for Walmart on Cranberry Highway. All in favor, say aye.
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 That passes unanimously. It will be continued until Mr. Buckland has a chance to negotiate the disposition of that $20,000. Next thing, we're gonna move on to public hearings. Public hearing 15-16, David and Cynthia Garnett, special permit and/or variance for 23 Fisherman Cove Road. Please step forward.
Good evening.
Want me to read the public notice?
Hang on, and we're gonna have it read in. Go ahead.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on August 26, 2020, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 1520 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 621 and Article 1352 under the Wareham zoning bylaws for David and Cynthia Garnett, care of JC Engineering, Inc., of 2854 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass., 02538, proposing to construct a new addition and porch to the front of the dwelling and a porch on the rear of the dwelling at 23 Fisherman Cove Road, Wareham, Mass., Accessory Map 3, Lot R15 in the R43 zoning district.
Okay, now, who's that man behind the mask? Could you give your name and, and give us a little bit of a background on what you're up to, sir?
Exactly. Good evening, Brad Bertola with JC Engineering. Tonight with me is David and Cynthia Garnett, the property owners. This project is located at 23 Fisherman Cove Road, and the property owners would like to make some modifications to their dwelling, including a small addition to the front of the dwelling, a farmer's porch across the remaining front of the dwelling, and a small porch off the back of the dwelling. Before I move forward, I'm assuming it appears that you guys all have the application, includes the plan, and the architectural renderings that were prepared by their architect?
Yep, we have them.
Okay. So, this property contains a single-family dwelling and a detached garage on a 15,260 square foot lot. This lot was created in 1968, back when zoning in, at the time was 15,000 square foot lots with 100 feet of frontage. The zoning setbacks at that time are 20 feet front, 10 side and rear. I depicted those as the dark blue dotted lines on the plan. Eventually, in, about a year after this house was constructed, zoning changed to 43,000 square feet, but the zoning setbacks stayed the same at 20, 10, 10, up until 2004, 2005, when they have increased to 40, 20, 20, 40 in the front, 20 on the side, and 20 in the rear. I show those as purple lines on the plan. So, up until 2004, when those zoning changes took place, this lot was conforming, but with that zoning change, it became a pre-existing non-conforming structure. In accordance with the letter that was prepared by the building commissioner, Mr. Morris, the construction of this addition and porch, and even the porch off the back, increased the non-conforming nature, but we're here to prove to you that it's not a substantial increase and not a detriment to the neighborhood. As you can see on the site plan, or even on the renderings on the last two pages of the application, the existing dwelling is situated 25.4 feet from the right-of-way, but that's not the actual traveled surface. The traveled surface is considerably more, as you can see with the edge of pavement and the hydrant. What we're proposing is to add this porch in addition, but we're following, we decided to follow the original zoning setbacks, the 20-foot off the front and 10 off the side. The property owners originally wanted about a seven-and-a-half-foot deep farmer's porch for the full length of the house, but we decided that, you know, let's try to hold a 20-foot front setback and 10-side setback. So, as you can see on the site plan, the porch is just about two feet shorter than the, the front of the house. Ultimately, they really wanted the full length of the house, but we're presenting the current plan tonight. The, as you can see on the renderings, there's a small eight-by-13-foot, single-story addition being added. The current house is Cape style, so pretty much two stories, or one and three-quarters stories, and the existing, or proposed addition will not extend any higher than the existing roof pitch on the dwelling. Also, the proposed additions and porches don't lengthen the existing structures, so we're not getting any closer, visually closer to the, the property lines. The small porch off the back of the house is eight, 19.8 feet, just to keep it square with the house, so this, it just, just within the current 20-foot side setbacks. So, we have, we're here before you tonight to ask you to review this project and determine if these changes that we're asking for are substantially non-conforming or more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Substantially more detrimental.
We feel that they're not. As you can see on the site plan, the proposed addition is still considerably, almost 40 feet or greater from the actual traveled surface, so it still feels that it has the same setback requirement as, as the structure. The right-of-way in this area is, is 50 feet, so that's why there's a considerable amount of grassed yard in front of their lot that they maintain, but it's actually within the road layout. In regards to the zoning size, this lot just doesn't classify to meet the zoning table that allows alternative setbacks for small lots. The new changes in the zoning bylaw, I believe it's table 620, 628...
621?
628, allows for modified zoning setbacks for small lots, and they break it out into different categories, 5,000-square-foot lots, 10,000, or 15,000. This subdivision was created at the time there was a minimum of 15,000 square foot lots, and a majority of these lots are just over that count. I believe there's one that I noticed today that would be allowed to build 20 feet from the front and 10 from the side, just because it was designed for exactly 15,000 square feet. But if we were in that zoning category, we're considerably less in regards to floor area that would be allowed on a lot that's just 260 square feet smaller than this lot. In regards to the look of the structure, the farmer's porch is not out of the norm for the neighborhood. There's a number of other homes that have a porch across the front. They're actually, actually, actually living here for about, or had, had the property for about a year now, and they've, very hot and sometimes in the summer, so they're like a, a covered area out of the sun to, to enjoy their property. This, again, will be a single-family house. We're not increasing any traffic by the expansion of this dwelling or the porch. And in regards to runoff on the property, the porch off the back is being constructed on an existing patio. Actually, the patio will probably be removed, but we're not increasing any impervious area or runoff on the property. And there's a walkway across the front, and most of the porches will be within that area, so insignificant increase in the surface water runoff. I did receive a copy of a letter from number 22 Fisherman Cove Road. The neighbors brought it. I'd like to submit this for the record. I'm not sure if you want to read it into the record or just...
I'll, I'll give it a look.
Thanks. So, again, we're, we're here tonight to request a special permit and hopefully get a determination from this board that what we're proposing is not a detriment to this neighborhood or not substantially increasing the non-conforming of said, said structure.
I'll put it on the record that the letter does come from the neighbors at 22. It is in the affirmative. It's in favor of the addition. We don't need to read it word-for-word, and it's, it's a, it's a supporting document.
Now, if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. I, I'll start out with a couple of questions. I was listening to you, but I was trying to follow and, and reference a couple of things. So, as you've got this drawn, you're showing the property line, but from the dark black property line out to the edge of the pavement would appear to be part of their lot, but it's, it's really not. The town owns it, is that it?
Yes, it's within the road layout, but it's, it's...
And it's Fisherman's Cove Road. I'm familiar with Fisherman's Cove Road. The chances of the town putting a three-lane highway in there are pretty slim and needing that land, but, you know, they may want to put sort of edge or something underground there someday. Okay. And the blue dotted lines, were that the, if that were the continuing zoning back when this house was built, what you're proposing would conform?
Yes, we're proposing to conform.
I see, I see the purple lines too. Okay. And so, my question is, the little eight-by, the little, you're gonna change the roof line on the little, on the left-hand side a little bit. What's that gonna, you're gonna add some room? What, what are you doing, making a room bigger, adding a room? What's that?
Right. So, the room inside, as you enter the house now, you walk right in front of the window there. There's really no place in the house to sit down and have a meal. It's just...
You make it, so that's the kitchen end of the house?
That would, yeah, it would actually, we would actually bring that forward and put a table and chairs in that little area.
It'll be like a dining room area.
Exactly, yeah.
Breakfast area.
Yeah, not a separate room, it's just gonna...
You're not adding a bedroom?
No, no.
And I'm, and, I mean, you could be part of your living room. I'm just, just curious.
Yep.
And so, I'm taking it that that end of the house is the kitchen end of the house?
Yeah.
And the addition that you're putting on the back, or the deck you're putting on the back, is kind of like off the kitchen too, so you're gonna have a...
Right, exactly, yeah.
I got it. Okay, I'm just trying to get a feel for what you're, for what you're trying to do. I have, I see nothing wrong with what you're proposing to do. I have no other questions. I'm gonna turn to my board. I'm gonna turn to the right. Chris, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I have a front porch on my, my house, and I love the front porch, so I, I understand.
Questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but I do want to just say that I appreciate how you've presented this and that you're trying to remain within the conformity of when the house was originally purchased. The law has changed, but if you purchase that house, it's my thought that you should be able to do what was allowed at the time that you purchased that piece of property and land, regardless of what has changed since that time. So, I'm in support of it, and I see this as non-detrimental, and I think we need to make a determination that...
Yeah, we'll get to that.
About the special permit and variance.
Richard, do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
Just the small sunroom porch, that'll be a foundation under there and, and the porch, the slab, and then the, the front farmer's porch is gonna be sonotubes?
I would imagine so.
Imagine, okay. Everything else looks like, like Veronica said, you're staying inside the old conformity, so I'm cool with that.
Thank you.
I think it's a good little project. I think it'll be great when you guys are done.
It looks like you're trying to be good neighbors, and it looks like you're trying to be a good citizen and a good member of the town, so we just have to, I'm, at this point, I'm gonna, I see somebody out there waving at me. I'll wave back. Hi, how are you? Now, at this point, I'd like to open it up to anybody from the public that would like to come forward and make any comments in, in favor or against, in, in far or against. And there's a seat down there at the end and a microphone, sir. Feel free to start out with your name.
My name is Rick McDonald, and I'm a butter to the property. And initially, I had concerns about where this addition is, because I look right over that roof into the canal, and it's the only water view I have. And on that basis, I couldn't understand the plans well enough to understand whether things are going well or not.
Hold on one minute.
Pardon?
Can you hold on one minute?
Sure.
Bob, are you getting him okay?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I'm barely hearing you. Okay. As long as it's getting recorded. Go ahead, sir.
Right.
I just want you to know, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Sure. Maybe you could pass this forward, and some of the pitches will help. But needless to say, my concerns, I, I had spoken to Dave on Sunday, and he informed me that the roof, in terms of the addition in the front, addition in the back, and the existing one, will not change in height. And on the basis of that, I do not have a problem with the approval of this whatsoever, but I just wanted to be ensured that that existing roof wasn't gonna start getting bigger.
I guess we could make that a condition, but at this point, I don't see it as appropriate. But go ahead, I'll let you finish your...
Well, that's pretty much it. I mean, the thing is, is that I've lived in this town, I've lived in that house for 39 years, and watching my water views disappear, and this is my last one, and I didn't want to see it disappear quickly without consideration.
Well, I could, I'll tell him to be very slow about it.
But if you, right. You can see some of the pitches I've drawn there that just kind of express my concerns. But again, as Dave had told me on Sunday, none of these existing roofs are gonna exceed the existing roof.
Okay, so...
And on that basis, I don't have any problem with approval.
You live on Pinewood Road?
Correct.
Okay.
You can see in the plot plan where I'm...
I can see where you are, yep. I see where you are. Yep. Pass that along for, okay, do you have any more comments?
That's it, I'm all set.
Thank, thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else here from the public that would like to speak either in favor or against this project? Hearing none, I'm gonna move to the board and give you guys one last chance for any questions, and then I'm gonna suggest that we move to close the public...
Good question.
Oh, Ken, I'm sorry. Yep?
Sorry, Brad. Can you explain the flood zone lines on the plot plan? It seems to go from a V-zone, Velocity Zone, to a Zone X, and then it goes from a Zone X to a Zone X, and I don't understand the...
The floodplain maps have, some areas are delineated, Zone X shaded, and that would be areas that are within the 500-year floodplain, but outside of the 100-year floodplain. The areas that are labeled Zone X on a floodplain map that doesn't show any hash, hash, hashing, or hatching, those areas are completely outside of the 500-year floodplain. Any areas outside of Zone X are not mandated to carry any flood insurance.
So, you're saying that the, the line that runs through the, the existing garage goes from a shaded Zone X to an unshaded Zone X?
Yes, they're both, that whole area is Zone X and what is considered outside of the flood zone. That would typically require additional, you know, requirements in regards to building codes. That's not the case in Zone X or Zone X shaded.
Thank you.
All set, Ken?
Yep.
Okay. Unless anybody has any objections, I recommend we close the public portion of this hearing and make a determination as to whether this is detrimental or non-detrimental. So, if I could get a motion to close the public portion of this hearing?
Make a motion to close a public hearing?
Do I have a second?
Second that.
So, I have a motion to close the portion and have a second to close the port, the public portion of this hearing? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously, okay. So, now, nobody can talk but the people on the board, and we feel godlike. Okay, so, anybody have any particular preferences, conditions, anything regarding this, any feelings? If not, I think we need to discuss whether this is detrimental or non-detrimental. It makes a difference on whether we're granting a, a variance or a special permit. If it's not detrimental to the neighborhood, am I saying this right, Ken? We, we are granting a special...
It's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
It's not, if it's, if we determine that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, we can then grant a variance. Is that correct?
A special permit.
A special, I'm sorry. I always say it backwards, a special permit, as opposed to a variance. It's a little bit of minutia, but it's important to have it in the record. I personally don't find it more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Yeah, me neither.
I don't either.
I agree.
Okay, so, consensus of the board?
So, I'd like to make, make, I'd like to make a motion...
Yes?
To move forward, have a, as a special permit with this project.
So, Veronica motions that this is, that she suggests this is non-detrimental to, not more detrimental to the neighborhood, and it should be heard as a special permit. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 It's not detrimental to the neighborhood according to this godlike board. So, now, we can take a vote and say yea or nay, thumbs up or thumbs down. So, what's it gonna be? Need a drum roll or anything? Would anybody like to make a nomination, a recommendation, a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the project as presented with standard conditions.
I have a motion by Veronica to approve as presented with standard conditions. Do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Richard Simple, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously. As, as my mentor told me, when they say yes, stop talking. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, people. It looks like a very nice project.
We're very happy.
Thanks again for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for presenting it in a manner that we could be, act as expeditiously as we did. Information provided makes a big difference. Do we have something to sign? Just for who's on deck, it's 1620 TJP Realty. You're here, we gotta finish a little business on that one, but come on up and get comfortable, warm the seat.
I can't find a drop...
It's all right, then, then... Do you go by the town hall often enough that you can swing by?
Absolutely.
Jake?
Yeah, I can make it.
You can? Do you go by the town hall at some point during the next week?
Sure.
And Veronica? If you'd just have Sonia prepare it for our signatures, give us a tech, an email, it's ready, we'll come by and sign it. We'll keep the ball rolling.
Sounds good.
Okay? Okay, so now, we can hear from TJP Realty, looking for a variance for 13 Over Jordan Road. I think we need to read that in. Go ahead.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on August 26, 2020, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the, of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 1620 for a variance from the requirements of table 621 and Article 16, definition of building height, under the Wareham zoning bylaws for TJP Realty LLC, care of Amen Clower LLP of 39 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass., seeking to construct a barn at 13 Over Jordan Road, Wareham, Mass., Accessory Map 20, Lot 1026 in the R60 zoning district.
All set, Ken?
Set.
Okay, who's, who's speaking?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm in Falmouth, and I'm representing, representing the applicant tonight, Tom Parento, the manager of TJP Realty LLC. They're the owners of 13 Over Jordan Road and the applicants in this matter. While I do a lot of permitting in Falmouth, I seldom come to this side of the bridge, so I'd ask kindly that you be gentle to me.
I'll be gentle.
Adding to that, I wrongly assumed this was a virtual meeting, and I just found out otherwise about two hours ago, so I had, I had to scramble to find some pants. We are requesting a variance from Section 625 of the zoning bylaw to allow a deviation from the height limitation, which is 20 feet for accessory structures. This property, 13 Over Jordan Road, is a, it's a large lot. It's 5.39 acres, and it's located in residential, the R60 zoning district. The applicant has proposed a large barn, approximately 50 by 100 feet, at the southern end of their property. The height of that proposed barn is 25 feet to the ridge. The shape and size of this lot are unique relative to the zoning district in that it's, it's an overly large lot and it is, has a rather unique shape to it. And it is disproportionately affected by the flood zone, with the majority of the lot being located in the Velocity 17 and 18 zone, and the barn is located in the AE15 zone. The barn will conform to flood zone regulations, it'll be built entirely above elevation 16, though there's no habitable space within the building. Given that size and shape of the lot, the location of the barn will not impact fuses from public ways or abutting properties. As to not affecting abutting, abutting properties, it should be noted that TJP Realty actually owns all of the abutting properties to this as well, though it wouldn't have an effect even if that weren't the case. As such, a literal enforcement of the bylaw would constitute a hardship to the applicant in preventing an appropriately-sized accessory structure for this lot. This variance, I believe, may be allowed without either any detriment to the public good or nullifying the intent of the bylaw. I've discussed this with the building inspector, Mr. Morris, and he voiced a full support for the application and didn't feel as though it would be out of character or too much of an ask in this, in this situation. For these reasons, I believe that the board can and should grant a variance, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have at this time.
Okay. So, I promised to be gentle with you, but you gotta be gentle with me too.
I, I'll do my best.
Okay. So, you're looking, this isn't the residence, this is an accessory building?
This is an accessory structure, yes.
Okay.
There, there is a separate application for a variance to the residence.
Somewhere in our bylaws, it says an accessory building has to be shorter than the residence, is that it?
No, it says 20, it's a 20-foot height limitation for accessory structures.
It says what?
It's a 20-foot height limitation for accessory...
20-foot, I, I don't, I don't get it. I don't, where does it say that?
I believe it's Section 625, there's a table.
625?
Yep.
Okay, I'm, I just... Accessory buildings, okay. Accessory buildings, okay. Okay. Commercial districts, village districts, residential districts, front side rear height. You know, you learn something every day, you know, and...
If there's no height limitation, that's great, we'll...
I didn't know, I didn't know this was here. I don't know if it's something new that, that happened, you know, is this a new thing, Ken, or?
It was modified recently, yes.
Recently, okay. They snuck it in there. I get it, well, I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm, front side, so, height, residential, village, 20 feet, I guess note one. And how far from the house is it?
Uh, it's, it's...
Distance?
Pretty sizable distance, I...
It's not a garage, it's a barn, is that it?
It's a barn, it, it is a barn.
Usually barns are bigger than the houses, that's what's getting me all twisted up, sorry, I'm just trying to...
Probably about 300 feet. Yeah, about 300 feet from the house, sir? Approximately 300 feet from the house.
300?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. What do you use the barn for?
This is, this is Steve Egan. Steve is the architect for Longfellow Design Build, and, and he's, he's been doing the design work on the, on the primary house. The barn is, is used for storage, it'll be used for storage for, for this lot, and as I mentioned, Mr. Parento and his family own, own many of the surrounding properties, and rather than trying to, they're using this sort of as a common, common area for themselves.
I have, I've looked at some, some of the paperwork that's in front of us, and I see a whole bunch of other lots, I couldn't quite determine what that all was on the...
Is this the Vopie's old property? That gone in the end over, or you don't know?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that, unfortunately.
So Over Jordan Road does go down, Vopie was on both sides of it as you enter it off of Great Neck Road.
And I see bonds being built down there now.
And, um...
Or buildings being bought, I go to Shell Point quite a bit.
Yep, there's...
Seems like there's, there's a large structure being built that's been going on for a bit.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Right? I'm familiar with that lot.
So, here's my dilemma before I even set the board on you. I don't have any plot plans, I don't have any, you know, he's saying is it the Vopie property, that would help me, but I don't know, you know?
We did submit a plot, we did submit a, a plot plan with our application, as part of our application package.
Let me see if it's in here, let me see, maybe I'm just not looking good enough.
And I do have a full-size plan with me as well, I brought one.
A board or something you can hold up?
I'd be happy to pass this around.
Do show and tell with us, get us, yeah, try to get our heads into what you're doing here.
So...
Feel free to walk around, yeah, that, that works.
I think this might be the, I'm happy to pass this around, this might be the most instructive, because this gives the actual site locus, so that'll help orient you a little bit to where we are.
I know exactly where it is as far as in town and...
Yep, okay.
I know if, if I turn right, I go down towards the golf course, but just before I turn right, I turn left onto Over Jordan Road, I know both sides of the road where hayfields...
So, so what we're showing here, this is Shell Point Bay here, okay? This is where the host on this lot will be built.
So where is that in relation?
This is the barn over here.
Okay, so when I turn left onto Jordan Road, and, and my memory is, like I said, it was a hayfield on both sides, does it continue to be a hayfield on both sides, and are we going through that and getting further down the road?
I'm gonna defer to Mr. Egan on this one.
I know Kevin already introduced me, I'm Steve Egan, architect with Longfellow Design Build. So it is a hayfield to a certain point, and TJP LLC does indeed own it at that point, but this is further closer to the water. When you continue down Over Jordan Road, you get to a neck in the road that leads to five or six more houses down further.
Yep, yep.
This is just before that.
So Paul had the house on the left, he had the big tower, you could go up in the tower and look out over the bay.
I remember the tower, the tower is unfortunately gone now.
Okay, so that's, is that the property?
No, it's the opposite side, it's on the right side as it comes down.
Opposite side, so it was his father's property. Okay, I got it.
Yep.
Okay, I got it, you know, they used to have a boat they parked over there and never used, it was called the Black Duck, it was black. And, you know, our ex-state governor, believe it or not, brother, that's who owned that, but, okay, so now I've got, can you on that, show me where Over Jordan Road is on that?
So this is, this is 2 Over Jordan Road here.
That's 2 Over Jordan Road. So off of Over Jordan Road, as I'm going down, I'm gonna turn right into that private driveway to get down into this property.
Yes.
And then I'm gonna come to a house?
Come to a house here, Shell Point Bay will be on your left, and if you continue bearing to the right following the lot...
That's where you want to put the barn?
That's where we want to put the barn.
And, and are there any other residences that you can see from that where that barn's gonna be?
In my experience, no, I have not been able to see other residences from that point. I know where they are, but they're either through thick trees or...
Yeah, I got it, I mean, I've got it in my head, a lot of the questions I'm asking, I'm asking for the record more than for my knowledge, I, you know, just, and, and... So, you're gonna, so, the, the book says 20 feet, and what height do you want to build that?
It would be 25 feet.
25 feet to the peak?
Correct.
To the peak.
Not including weather veins or...
No, no, there's no, there's no decorations, this is a rendering.
And it's a steel building?
A pre-manufactured metal building.
Manufacturing steel building.
It's a, it's a fairly plain building, we're not, we're not trying to...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
...that sexy, it's just, it's a functional barn.
Yep. Gotcha. And it's just gonna be for whatever, it's, we accumulate things to fill the space we have.
You know, there is a, there is a boat that'll be stored there in the off-season, a trailer boat that'll be stored there in the off-season, and other than that, it's, it's, it's an oversized barn to serve the oversized lot.
And this has been mailed out to all, and any and all abutting neighbors?
We, we submitted all the documentation we were supposed to, and, and all the notices went out as far as I'm aware.
I haven't, I haven't, again, I still haven't asked my board members to beat you up yet, but I'm looking for the members of the audience that are here to oppose or approve of your application, if they'd like to come up and speak now. And from that huge crowd back there, I don't see anybody raising their hands.
Might take them some time from the back of the room now.
I don't see anybody out in the hall looking to, I don't see anybody being stopped from coming in, and every abutter has gotten notice, and they've got a chance to approve or object, and nobody has anything to say in the neighborhood.
As far as I'm aware, sir.
As far as this meeting is concerned, because I'm giving them the chance to speak now. Okay, then I am gonna now turn to the board, and Chris, I put you on the hot seat first, I'm gonna let you be last this time. Rich, I put you first a couple times. Jacob, why don't we ask you first?
I don't see a problem with going five feet over at all.
Okay. No comments. Rick, I'm gonna turn to you, any comments? You need some more time to shuffle through.
No, I'm just, this is just strictly gonna be storage, it's not gonna be livestock, we're not...
Nope, just storage.
Okay.
My first question would be to Ken.
Can you hear her?
So, you said the height changed recently in the bylaw?
The table changed, the height didn't actually change, no, it's been that 20 feet for a while.
I think they added, looks to me like they added this table here that I had never seen before, accessory buildings.
Accessory, accessory buildings were in the previous iterations of the zoning bylaws, it's just that some of the notes were changed, there was some clarification about what their, the standards were.
Okay, so that's been in there, okay. So I do have a few questions, and then just some comments. So, I, this is a variance, obviously you know that you've applied for it as such, and you mentioned a hardship in terms of use, and you probably are aware that the variance relates to the land...
Mm-hmm.
...creating a hardship, and it's not related to the use of the building.
It's, uh, my, my understanding has always been that, that the hardship is created when a literal, a literal enforcement of the bylaw would constitute a hardship relative to the homeowner, to, to the, to the use of the land, to the use of the land, and, and...
It's, it's the, the shape?
If you want to use the land to put a 15-foot tall boat in a 10-foot tall building, that would be a hardship. If you want to use the land to put a 15-foot tall boat in a 10-foot tall building, that would create a hardship.
Sure.
Okay.
I, I think, you know, the, the, the bylaw reflects the height limitation of an accessory structure. I think that there is a unique aspect to this lot, given that, the, both the size of the lot and the shape of the lot, that would allow for a variance to be granted that wouldn't, that would, that would result in, have a result that would not be detrimental to the intent of the bylaw, and, and wouldn't affect the public good. I think that, that is, that is my understanding.
I got your question, I got your question, that's...
Yeah, so, as far as we're concerned, that there's no actual land hardship? That's just what I want to be clear about?
No, no.
Okay. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I do have some concerns because it is a residential neighborhood, I'm actually not familiar exactly with where we're talking about, so, I, and I also think, so I would like to have a site visit, just so I can see where, where it is in relationship, and, do you have any pictures or anything of the neighboring properties or anything else?
I, I don't, I don't with me. We could certainly, we could certainly provide some, we could obtain some...
That would be helpful. And then the other thing is, because this is a variance that you're going for, and as far as I'm concerned, I can't really see a hardship in terms of the land, I'd like to give the public a little bit more time for a response, you know, moving forward. So for me, I, I wouldn't be prepared to make a decision tonight on this in favor of.
Okay, and that's, I've talked to everybody in the board except for you, right, Chris?
Correct.
What are your thoughts?
This is a 50 by 100 foot?
Yes.
Is that what it is? Pretty big building, actually.
It is.
What's that big equipment that you're gonna put in it?
My understanding, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure what, what their, what their intent to store in there is, I know that, the only thing I've been told for sure is a boat. It's, I think it's intended for vehicles and belongings and a boat storage, and I, I don't know whether or not, I don't, I don't believe there's any intent to, to use it for any type of contractor's yard or commercial, commercial equipment.
If that was, yeah, being such a large building, that was kind of my concern, being a residential neighborhood, all the, everything that was going in, and I was just kind of concerned about all the equipment within it. And also, this looks like, I don't know, do we have any restrictions from wetlands? This looks like it's, you know, it's in the 100-foot wetland.
This has been to Conservation Commission.
It has been?
Yeah. This plan actually was prepared for the notice of intent.
How big is the lot that this is going on?
5.39 acres.
Huge lot. Five and a third acres.
5, yeah, just, just over.
5.39, almost five and a quarter, five and a half, but 5.4 almost.
Yep.
5.39.
Yep.
Correct.
I don't have any more questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, I know Veronica is not inclined to vote this evening, or at least if she votes, she's not gonna vote in favor. She's telegraphed that message. How does the rest of the board feel? Are you guys interested in continuing, and are you, are you ready to make a...
I'd like to make, to make a motion to approve once we close the hearing.
You'd like to make a motion to approve?
Yeah.
As presented?
Yes.
With standard conditions?
Yes.
Do I get a second on that? I need a, a motion and a second in order.
We need to close the hearing first.
We need to close the hearing first.
Your motion is to close?
To close, and then...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I need a motion, I need, I got a motion to close the hearing.
Quick, quick question, sir. I'm not sure what your typical protocol is, but whereas one, one vote's been clearly telegraphed not in favor of tonight, given that we do need, you know, all four other votes, would it be possible to have, you know, kind of a stop hole before the vote, before the hearing is closed? Because my, my concern would be, of course, that if we don't pass, then that's a denial, and I don't want to be timed barred.
You don't want the cost of having to reapply?
Well, no, and it's not even the cost, I don't want to be timed barred.
The time?
It's a two-year, it's a two-year time bar.
Well, we could, it, we could do with or without prejudice, and, and without prejudice, we could have you back in here in 30 days.
That would, you know, that would be fine, but, you know...
I can certainly tell you, I'll, I'll respond to you right now, and I'm looking at the board, would there anybody, would any of the members to my left or right feel the need to have an unsuccessful vote be with prejudice so that they could not be back here for two years? It would take...
Just, just covering my bases.
Personally, I, I would like a continuance, just as I said, to give some more, you know, abutters more time.
You want to see, you want to see more, you want more information? I got it.
And to give your abutters more time, just to make sure that, you know, because there's no hardship that I can see, but...
If I could speak to that just for a second, I was on the site this past week doing some drone footage and spoke with some of the neighbors, because people tend to get excited when they see a drone and they want some aerial photos of their house, and given the large nature of the property, being owned by one single LLC, they are very familiar with all their neighbors, and the neighbors definitely, I can confirm, received notice of this, just if that helps put your mind at ease.
Do you have any references, neighbors that are in favor of, that are, or any correspondence from you?
We didn't, we don't have any correspondence that was provided to us, or, and I'm not aware of any that was provided to the board.
But you did, we got green cards from every, every abutter.
We, we submitted all of our documentation to, to Sonia with the mailing, with the mailing labels and...
The neighbors were all notified, and the neighbors all had the chance to be here, you know that. And you know that every time the meeting gets postponed, less neighbors show up, not more. I'm just, you know, I understand you want to give more time, you know?
Could be, could be.
I understand, I'm not, I'm not arguing, I'm not, I'm just saying that it doesn't, it doesn't bear out to me that if nobody was here tonight, that somebody would suddenly show up in two weeks. But you're, you're entitled to your position. But we have, we have...
That wasn't, I just want to say, that wasn't my only reason. I would like to see, know the area, there are no pictures, I don't know anything about the area.
Okay.
I mean, I live here, but I don't know specifically where they're talking about.
Yeah, not everybody can...
If you have Google Maps on your phone, I usually Google Maps each one, and you can pull it right, you can pull it right up if you'd like to see.
This is, this is the road that goes in, it goes to the right and it goes around, it goes out back to another field that's out in the back.
It's in the middle of nowhere.
Area, right? The old house, the house, you tore the original house down?
Yep.
So that's the road that came into the original house, and then it bangs off, heads back up in, and then there's another field out back.
That is correct.
And that's basically where that's going.
That is correct.
I don't know if you can see.
That's Great Neck Road, that's, you can see now Great Neck Road, from the beginning of the town here, left, which is, right, this road, which is, um, start to short, right?
Yep.
Okay, so you know where you are now in the road?
Which one is it?
So, down this road, this is where I, this is, this is, like I said, it's the only side of the road you can go down, this is the house that was started off at that tower, we have, we have, it's there, it's on the, it's the, the mall, this, the, 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 the house, it's been, it's built up back there, there's any structure there, we have, we have, they are all, that's, you know, that local market, that's what I received, yes. Okay, I'm, 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 somewhat contrary to my rules.
Well, it helps me to know kind of where it is, so if I'm looking in the area, I'll be able to fi, to find it.
Okay. So, I don't need that on my phone anymore. So anyway, going back to where we were, we had a motion in front of us by Jake to close the public hearing. Do you want to enlighten? Do you want to, in light of the fact that she, she's resistant, and she'd like to see more information?
I think it's up to them, if they would like to-
Chris Rick, are you guys comfortable with, um, taking a vote on the other, taking a gamble on the other four members in front of you, or do you want to continue?
If I, you know, I, I, Mr. Morrison and, and Mr. Semple have made clear their, their, where they are, and I think I know where you are, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Condie, you're the only person I don't have a clear read on. Um, so I'm not sure if it's appropriate to ask if you're being inclined to vote yes or no, but I'm going to.
It's not, but I'm not gonna scold you, 'cause I told you I'd be gentle.
I appreciate that, thank you. Man of your word.
I'm not real familiar with the area. Um, I, I know where it is, I know what you're talking about. Um, is, is, is this in like a, a big open field? Are there, are there like a lot of trees around it?
Um, it's sort of pushed to the side of the smaller of the two existing fields, which was purposefully done because, uh, the main house is, is going to be a fairly nice and expensive house, and they didn't want it to be visible from either the main road or the house.
We're gonna take a minute here and let a couple of board members, they're not saying anything that's not for the record, they're just looking at some, um, Google pictures. If anybody wonders why there's a pregnant pause here-
It's not gonna block anybody's view from the water or anything, right? Where, where, it's towards the back of the property, right?
Yep, 'cause they own all this.
Where, where are these wetlands? Is it, is that like right over in?
Um, I don't know. I'm not sure, but it might be this stuff.
Usually, I like to try to get things done as, I don't like to make people come back and come back and come back.
I, I appreciate that.
Primarily because you guys get paid too damn much money.
Thank you.
It's not the reason.
You know, it doesn't, it doesn't always feel that way.
I just like to see projects go forward. I don't care if I keep an engineer coming back eight or 10 times, because, you know, engineers do that to us, but, I'm looking behind you too, but, um, I'm teasing a little. Uh, if you're, if you're uncomfortable, I'm okay with continuing and letting them bring in more aerial photos, or drone footage, or pictures of the house, or-
I, I think I would like to see more pictures.
So, I've got two members that are kind of like uncomfortable.
No, that, that's perfectly fine.
I, I don't think we want to close the public hearing, I think we want to keep it open, I think we should continue.
No.
Um, that's just, I'm trying to be fair to everybody.
Completely. Um, I'm not sure what, what your agenda looks like coming up.
Two weeks, um...
Well, we're here that night anyways.
You're here that night anyways?
We're here that night anyways, for, for another aspect of this property, so-
You want a 35-foot barn on a, an, an, uh...
Uh, this is, the other one's for the main house, and we'll, we'll talk about that one in due time.
Okay, okay. Same property?
Same property, same property.
More, more, all the more reason to let's, let's continue. You're coming that night anyway, what's that date?
That's September 9th.
So, um, we're gonna continue until September 9th, as long as the entire board agrees with that decision? I don't see anybody saying no. Okay, Ken?
That's fine.
We don't think we need to vote on that, let's just do it. See you September 9th.
Thank you very much, we, we appreciate your time.
Thank you, and, you know, when you come back, I can see, you know, um, we got at least two board members that would like to see some, either some aerial or some tough, you know, you know-
We'll get some, we'll get some photos submitted in advance of the hearing.
You heard their concerns, what they were looking for.
Yep. Happy to do that.
And you told us right up front that you, you know, you didn't expect, you kind of said you came a little bit less prepared than you'd like to, so...
We made the best of the situation.
Other than the fact that the guy that's building the building would like to get it built and get paid, you know, two weeks, the world won't end.
Perfectly fine, we, we really appreciate your time.
Can I make one more request of you when you come back?
Of course, ma'am.
Can you give us just a little bit more information, like on the planned use of the building?
Uh, sure.
If, I mean, if it's just storage, I get it, but kind of, that's pretty big for-
Yep. Yep, not a problem at all, we can pull this together, we'll have it submitted in advance of the hearing.
You're gonna put a 12-foot dinghy in there, and they want room to get around it and paint it?
It could, could, it could be a few dinghys.
Probably not, it could be a lot of them.
Well, that's just, I mean, that, that's just it, I think, I think that really is it. Um, so thank you all very much, we, we do appreciate it.
Thank you for your time, thank you for your patience with us, as we stumbled through it, we got, we got to the, uh, right decision, I think.
Great, thank you.
We'll see you in two weeks.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Buckland, we've never met before, but, uh, my partner Bob Amen speaks very highly of you, and, uh, wanted me to say hello.
I'm glad I got to meet you this time, too.
Take care.
Good night, man.
Good night, Bob, for me. I'm sure they're welcome.
Okay, so the only business we have left in front of us this evening, um, if, on the agenda, is a continued public hearing, 8-20, John Churchill, looking for a variance for 2,850 Cranberry Highway, map 129, lot 1077.
Please, either.
Did anybody get out for a site visit?
Ken, do you read it in?
I did it four or five times a day for the last two weeks. A good fishing spot.
I don't, yeah.
No, I drive, I go, I know the property well, I've been on the property.
Can I hand?
Go ahead, knock yourself out. Hand them out.
Thank you.
I always, I always go, and then Ken, so he has to read into the... Are we all set to start? I always cut Ken off.
We're fine.
Okay, all right. Hi, I'm Jillian, Jillian Morton, um, representing John Churchill, and he's here as well. Um, so we've, you've seen this, um, a few times, so I feel like I don't necessarily have to do the full presentation regarding the variance, and I thought it was really important this time, um, for John to have these renderings, and also discuss that hardship piece, 'cause I know that's been a concern of some of the board members, and, um, obviously John, being an engineer in town, knowing the history of the bylaws, history of his property, um, can really go through that history of, um, this particular lot, why the lot is unique, um, and the hardship to him with not being able to be approved for the two family, which I know was a concern. So John, you wanna talk about that?
All right, good evening, John Churchill, J.C. Engineering, uh, representing myself and the company. Uh, basically, uh, what you see here, and, uh, I've listened in on, uh, the tapes from the last meetings, uh, we will continue with the last meeting and the first meeting that we had, and a couple of things came up. Uh, I know, uh, there was a conversation about conservation. Uh, we do have an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission for this exact project that you see here, the, the duplex with the one car garage for each unit. Um, that is approved, we do have no, an order of conditions recorded at the registry deeds, uh, for that project. Um, one of the other questions that came up was the, uh, impervious area and building coverage. So in this zoning district, we're in the strip commercial. Um, what you see here, uh, we're allowed to go up to 40% building coverage and 65% impervious. Uh, what we're asking is 7% building coverage and 16.1%, uh, impervious on this. Uh, so hopefully that helps a little bit, uh, understand the magnitude, uh, of this project, and how, uh, we're not doing exactly, uh, what we could potentially be doing on this project. Uh, so the uniqueness and the hardship of this, of this property, um, goes back, I bought this property almost 20 years ago, and, um, I bought the property, this is property, if you look at, uh, a USGS map, you'll see five dots, or six dots on that map. But that, that map is from 1970s, and what that shows is, this was a farm stand. So if you remember back in 1970 or around, driving down Cranberry Highway, there was seven, uh, six buildings, cesspools, remnants of foundations on this property at one time. Um, so we've since, obviously, filled those cesspools in, 'cause they were hazardous for people walking, uh, on the property, uh, but this property was used as a commercial, uh, farm stand, um, at one time. So I bought it 20 years ago, and the intention was always to eventually develop it, basically. Uh, it was a buildable lot, always was a buildable lot, I purchased it as a buildable lot, and I sat on it, 'cause basically I said, you know what, eventually, I may want to do something with it. So, um, fast forward, about 10 years later, and, um, as you can see, the, the herring run, and if you went up there, you see the herring run, uh, that's, that's there, uh, Manatees Canal, and then you have this wetland area that runs adjacent essentially, so when the herring run blocks, uh, gets blocked up essentially, it spills over onto my property, which created the wetland that you see here. Uh, so that wetland actually has increased in size, uh, because of all the debris at the outlet pipe, uh, for the herring run. Uh, in saying that, uh, just, uh, as a side note, in 2014, we flagged the wetland, basically, which it was right along the edge of the canal. Uh, Mastioti had a consultant come in in 2017, and this flag that you see here, uh, from their interpretation of where the wetland line was. So this is what we got stuck with, uh, so we lost almost 15 to 25 feet of land area, uh, when Mastioti sent their consultant, um, in. So 10, 10 years ago, um, the wetland, uh, the Wayham Wetland Bylaw, uh, created a no-touch buffer. I don't know if you guys remember that, uh, going through town meeting, and what they did for a single-family up to a three-family home, you have to do a 30-foot no-touch. So basically, what you see here is a 30-foot no-touch, okay? If you do a commercial on this property, it's a 50-foot no-touch. So now, my no-touch would be over here.
So let me just stop you for a minute.
Okay.
It says BVW, and it starts with 2-2F, and CED, blah, blah, blah. That's the existing flagged wetland.
Correct.
In green, with a broken dash, dot, broken line.
Correct, that's the approved wetland line from the Conservation-
And the hash marks that are black and white is the no-touch zone.
That's the no-touch buffer, correct.
That's the no-touch zone for residential.
For res, for, yes, for, for up to a three-family home.
Up to three-family, and if it was commercial?
Uh, move that line 20 feet closer to the bu, the building.
That, that line would come into the proposed three-bedroom unit.
Oh, absolutely, yep.
Okay.
So that, so that's 10 years ago, and then approximately six years ago, if you remember, or five years ago, they did a zoning rewrite, and I thought for sure the strip commercial always was allowed to do a drive-through. I knew they were always allowed to do the drive-through, general commercial wasn't allowed to do a drive-through. Well, during the zoning rewrite in the table, they changed the drive-through in a strip commercial to be a no. They changed the Y to an N. I was oblivious, I've been in town forever, I didn't read that zoning table that closely, and no one really mentioned that they were changing that, but now the strip commercial is now a, a no for a drive-through. It used to be yes, up to about five years ago. So now, I got a 50-foot no-touch, I have no drive-through available to me as a commercial property, and then, three years ago, the reason they were in there flagging the wetlands, Mastioti, was 'cause they're gonna replace the bridge, the bridge next to, J.C., this property. Well, as an engineer, I would usually use the lower area, which is across the street from this property, over here, near the herring run and the building, as a detention basin. Well, they've designed their 25% plans, and they're proposing to put the detention basin right about here, and do a taking now. So I've asked for the plans, have not received them, have been told that that's where the detention basin is planned for, so I would like to do something on this property, try it to getting my land further taken from me, um, and that's why, what you see here, is a two-family. So what we're asking for is, a single-family is allowed by right, a two-family is allowed under the use, but we don't meet the dimension requirements, but a commercial property, a commercial use is allowed, allowed by right with the dimension requirements. So a two-family, in my opinion, is in-between. So it's, it's to, to realize that a two-family on this property is actually more detrimental than putting a commercial on this property, is, is, in my opinion, a, a, oversight within the, within the zoning bylaws, because I think you're in the middle. I think, I think a two-family, and, and what we're trying to propose there is something, and I sit here and look at this property every single day, and go, what should I do? And as I further and further get restricted and restricted, I'm saying to myself, I gotta do something, and this is what I finally came up with. A single-family home does not make sense on Cranberry Highway, it's a one-way section, so a commercial is complicated. Not only the 50-foot touch wetland, but we're on, we're on the only of Cranberry Highway all through Wayham, how many one-way sections in Cranberry Highway are there? This is the only section. So we meet the uniqueness, we meet the hardship, and I think this is a good use, what you see here, to provide residential housing to the area. If you look at the map, and I see, like, I did a blow-up, and you can see all the impervious area, all the commercial, two-family right across the street, three-family, two-family out behind me. I'm not doing anything that, in that area, that is unlike what's around me and near me. If I'm forced to go commercial, or a single-family home, do you think that's a better project than a two-family home on this pro, on this property? In my opinion, this is the best use for the property, with all the restrictions and all the criteria that I'm dealing with, and I hope you agree with me, and grant this, so we can move forward and get this built, and provide a couple residential units for rental.
Thank you for your time, sir, and your enthusiastic presentation.
Thanks, Jim.
You seem, you seem a little, um, personally involved.
Well, I look at it every day.
You are, you are, sure. Um, I don't have a lot of questions, personally, because I, this has been in front of us so long, I've, I've kind of had a chance to do my thinking and do my homework, so, um, I don't mind telegraphing that I find this possibly to be the highest and best use for the site. I can tell you from a, um, marketing point of view, that if the state wants to take your land, it's worth a heck of a lot more if there's something on it than if it's not, or they may actually decide of a different location. That's got nothing to do with whether I say yea or nay, but I can certainly understand your position. So, all that said, I'm gonna go to my far left. Mr. Semple, do you have any questions on this matter?
Um, I, I'll start out by, just starting with the, uh, the size of the lot. It's like one-third of what we're, what it's supposed to be, so you're, you're supposed to be at 45, and you're only at 30. That's like a, a third size of, of the lot. Seems like a lot of building on there. I understand, I heard what you said about commercial and everything else. Uh, secondly, I mean, we're gonna, you're gonna curb cut, and you're gonna have, you could have potentially probably six cars coming in and going out of that. I mean, you got a three-bedroom house, I mean, two, each of them are three bedrooms, uh, you don't know, you know, it could be just, somebody not using them, or they could be full, and say, blah, blah, potentially, you could have six cars coming and going out onto that road. That would be one of my, uh, the other concern, and then, you got the herring run canal, you've got the no-touch. What's to say if these are rentals? I mean, how do you control, I, I've heard horror stories, and I've owned a property that are rentals, and it doesn't seem like the people that rent are as responsible as people that own the property. Other than that, I, I'm, I, I just feel that there's a lot going on in that lot, for, for what you're asking.
So, I, I hear you, and, and, um, and you make a valid point. Um, let me ask you how you would feel if the, um, units were restricted to two-bedroom units as opposed to three? Would that impact your thinking at all? Or your, how, how would you, how would you react to that? You feel as though that's a favorable, um, situation, or you think it doesn't change anything?
I'd, I'd like to say it does, but I, I don't think it will, honestly, deep inside of me, I, I, that's, I've, I've said my piece, I, I think. Can I, can I respond, Mr.?
Yeah, you can respond to that.
Mr. Semple, I understand your concern, um, and basically what we see here, it's the herring run and the, the 30-foot no-touch that you see there, uh, the Conservation Commission has already approved that, and they're going to uphold that, that's, that's this document right here, it's an order of conditions.
Yep.
And this is recorded at the registry deeds, and this is in perpetuity, they have a condition here, that you can't touch or go within that 30-foot. They have a condition here that you can't touch or go within that 30-foot. So that's already a, an issue that's already addressed. If I do a single-family home, I could do a 10-bedroom single-family home. And I can do that by right and submit a building permit tomorrow. If I do a commercial development, you're going to have way more than six vehicles entering and exiting onto Cranberry Highway. And, and I hope you, if you drove down this area of Cranberry Highway, I'm on the one-way section. So commercial, it's only one way out.
I grew up on Glen Charlie Road.
Perfect. So then you know.
And I know where Old Glen Charlie Road is in it. And that basically is a residential area, and then you're, you're putting rental property in the middle of it, on, on the, on the side of it. That's, I just have those concerns.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Well, the residential area you're talking about, there's a commercial right, there's a sign place. So across the street from the sign place on Old Glen Charlie is a three-family.
Well, that, that was all commercial. That was the Greeks' property.
Yep.
He had all the restaurants and the candy that had the ants in it and everything. I remember all that.
And then there's a three-family on Old Glen Charlie right across the street. And then there's a two-family right next to that. So within this, within the, for, for my property, I see a three-family, a two-family, and two commercial properties. So the two-family is not out of the realm of what is in that area. So there already is down Old Glen Charlie. And what you see coming off of where we are located, and that, there's a one curb cut, which we have to get a MassDOT curb cut, and six, six cars coming onto Cranberry Highway at this location is not going to be, is not going to adversely impact Cranberry Highway. There's 20,000 cars per day.
I'm more worried just about somebody pulling out and getting T-boned, but that's, that's just maybe not nothing I should worry about.
Right. Well, that's, that's kind of what I was trying to say. Basically, if I'm forced to go with a commercial building, then you're looking at probably 30, 40 cars potentially per day.
Per hour.
What's that? Yeah. I mean, if I go, so it's, they're a single-family home with as many bedrooms as I want. So there's nobody that's going to restrict or, or you have the option under this.
I see what you're saying, and I, and I hear what you're saying.
Okay.
It could be worse, and it could be better, but.
I think this is the best solution for the property. That's what I'm saying.
If I may, I think those are really valid points, which I think you're making, especially the last one about rental properties and, and people being on the property and how they care about it, and the Herring Run right there. Just to that, I would say Mr. Churchill's engineering firm's right there, and his intention is not to sell the properties, it's to be the owner. So he's going to be right there, and he is not going to let someone disrupt that. And that was a concern of mine, obviously, is the Herring Run right there. So that, I would just say it against that one. You know, he wouldn't.
Yeah, correct. The, the, the reason why you see what you see is two rental units. I want to retain ownership of this property.
Yeah.
I'm not looking to sell this property. I own the property next door. So I do not want to sell this property. And this is when, this is the challenge that I'm, I'm, the hand that I'm dealt essentially with the fact that I have this vacant piece of land, and what do you do with it? And I'm so passionate about it because it just sat there, and it gets overgrown, you know, all summer long, and then in the wintertime, it's just this, this field, and then it gets overgrown, and I, and I sit there and watch this. And I'm passionate about it because I think the two rental units will, will provide at least the, the MassDOT from not taking my property, and it'll allow me to at least get some rental income on the property and provide for the housing need that's, that's here. I, I'd rather not do commercial. I market it as commercial, and it's not the best use on the property right here for commercial. It really isn't. But if I'm forced to go the, the conforming way, then that, that's why I'm pleading with the board tonight, is, is do you really want to force me to go to the, the conforming way, which really doesn't make sense in, in this area, in my opinion? Okay.
So you've got a two-car garage and a six-bedroom house separated by the garages, and one guy's going to get to use three bedrooms, and the other guy's going to get to use three bedrooms, and they're all, both going to get to park one car indoors, throw it up with bicycles and junk and what, and whatever. Or you could just build a six-bedroom, two-car garage house, but it couldn't, you couldn't collect two rents. You could only collect one, you know, one.
I agree. Correct.
Yep.
And the septic and all that would stay the same.
It would, it would, yeah. Basically, you'd see the same.
Footprint would stay the same.
Yes, sir. Yep. And I think, and if I do a commercial, you know, you're increasing the building coverage by almost 30%, and you'd increase the impervious area by 50%. I could, you know, I can, I can see what you're saying with dimensional requirements, but I'm so far under on the, on the, on the things that matter, in my opinion, which is building coverage and impervious area. You know what I mean? Those are, those, those numbers are so small compared to what you could potentially see on, on a project like this.
So you're looking for, part of your application is for variance from 45,000 to 30,000 square feet?
It's a, it's a dimensional variance. Technically, this was a grandfathered lot, but because I owned the lot next door when I bought it? I, I merged it. So I didn't get great advice when I bought it because I wouldn't be in front of you. I could do a two-family by right on this property if I didn't, if I didn't own the property next door and buy it. So if, if you bought this property, you would be a two-family building permit application, and, and you wouldn't be here in front, front. So again, I'm doing what's allowed, and a two-family is allowed under the zoning bylaw. It's just, it's weird how they've never updated that section, that they, they'll allow a commercial development on a small lot, but they won't allow a two-family. You need a bigger lot for a two-family. It's just, it's, it's, it's sort of a strange, a strange thing.
A lot of the rules we have are.
Exactly. And that's why I'm here for you today. That's why I'm pleading with you this evening, to just hopefully see it my way.
Richard, do you have any more questions or comments?
I'm, I'm.
I'm going to move to you, Jake.
No questions at this time.
Okay. You want to skip right past Veronica and go all the way over to Christopher?
Why?
Um. I'm not skipping you. I'm just. Yeah, I do have, I guess, a few questions.
Saving the worst for last.
So to me, I, I kind of agree with Richard. I think, I think there's a lot going on here. Looks, you're getting, you're giving yourself a, what, a variance? I mean, or, what do you call it? To, to put the septic on the other piece of property that you own? An easement, I guess. It's a, it's, it's an easement. I don't know. I have reservations about that, but maybe, maybe I shouldn't have reservations. I wish you could all, could put everything on that one lot without putting an easement in. I think it's, the, the, I mean, you're asking for a special permit. I think it's, this lot's becoming, going to become more of a non-conforming lot, it seems, with, with, with the variance and what you're asking for.
Yeah, we're asking for a variance, because I think the first time they brought it, they said special permit, and it's definitely a variance, so.
Now, would you be saturating that other lot by putting all the, you know, the, the septic system and, and everything else going over to that?
We've already submitted that plan to the Board of Health. We've already parked the property. Board of Health, we have Board of Health Conservation approval. All we're asking tonight is to, do you want to see a single-family, two-family, or a commercial development on this property, basically? You say no to the two-family, I'm, I'm going single-family or commercial? That's, that's really what it comes down to in front of the zoning board of feels. Her view.
I think I asked last time about town engineer. Has, has he seen this plan, and has he looked at it?
We haven't asked for a 53G account. We haven't asked the town engineer to review this. I don't feel the need. Ken, do you feel the need?
No, I don't.
Um, Jake, do you feel the need to have?
No. I forgot about Veronica, though.
Veronica?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear what you were talking about.
Do you feel as though we need the town engineer to check over Churchill Engineering's figures to make sure that this is engineered properly?
I have no question about the engineering. I don't have any questions regarding the engineering.
Okay. Sorry, the engineer. So.
And then you, you am.
No, not to, not to over, we're not overruling you, but you know.
Fine.
It's a legitimate concern. It's a legitimate question. No, we have not had the town engineer check the plan.
And, and you said the conservation has already.
Conservation's already signed off on Dave.
Signed off on it?
Dave's looked at it. Yep.
And what was my other question that I had? I guess I don't have any more questions.
Okay. That's right. If you have questions, we won't stop you from asking them before we close. Veronica, go ahead.
So I guess one of my first questions would be, when you purchased the property, it was a separate lot from the one that you have next door? You didn't recently divide it?
It was separate.
Well, how, what's the size of the lot next door?
30,000 square feet.
So.
Look, so the building inspector told me to, when I submitted this to the building inspector, who was two building inspectors ago, he told me, so re-divide, I changed the property line between the two slightly. This property was 30, 27,000? This might have been 27,000 square feet. And I had 33,000 next door, and I made them both 30,000 square feet. Or this had 33,000, I only had 27, because there was a taking done way back when. So I was asked by the building inspector to make two 30,000-square-foot lots. And he was basically going to sign off on the, on the permit. And then, all of a sudden, a couple building inspectors later, they say you got to go for a special permit. And then we come before the board, and they say go for variance. So this is where, so, so I, I don't want to be misleading, Mr. Dinesh, that, was I before the planning board? Yes. However, this was two, if you look at the assessments map or know this, probably the assessments map, you'll see the two separate parcels as they exist. So I don't, I don't want to be misleading on that.
Thank you.
But yes, we went from this point to change the, the line between the two lots. You see, do you see the map? Those, those are the two parcels, 2850 and 2854?
I did see that, and I actually looked to see if you made a better.
That was what, that's what it looked like.
Yep.
Thank you. Yep, sorry about that. I didn't mean to interject again.
So I have, you know, a few comments, and, and one of them was already talked about, and I did mention it at the last meeting. So, I mean, you're just making the requirement for a single-family dwelling and for even to have it as commercial strip. So I, I think it's a stretch to go to the two-family, which requires 45,000 square feet. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, there are several residential properties in that area, but personally, when I drive by that on Cranberry Highway, I would like to see commercial. The ones that are on Cranberry Highway right now are all commercial. It's the ones that are behind it and off that side street that are multifamily or residential. So I think too, in terms of what commercial strip is for and what that property, I mean, I understand that it's not ideal, but you purchased it knowing that it was very close to the water. You have 150-foot setback right now that's no new buildings required, and obviously, that was, there, you're still going to be able to put something there. The 30-foot no buff, no-touch zone aside, you know, the Wareham setbacks are 150 feet from the water. And this is, certainly looks like it's a lot closer than that. I could be wrong. But so those are my feelings on the property. And I guess pretty much that's, that's about it.
So you would, I'm, I'm sorry.
I've heard there's no-touch, no-touch, no-touch a few times. So I'm throwing this out to everybody. I'm kind of looking for, when, they say there's a 30-foot, or a 50-foot, or a 20-foot, or there's a no-touch zone. Does that no-touch zone imply you can't walk on it? You can't walk through it? You can't mow it? Or does it mean you can't develop it?
The, the way it's written right now, it's not 150-foot. The 150-foot is the septic setback that they created about four or five years ago.
What's this no-touch?
The no-touch zone is what they created, probably in 2012, I believe, somewhere in that vicinity. The Wareham Conservation Commission went to town meeting and changed the, changed the no-touch to a 30-foot no-touch and a 50-foot no-touch, which they have in their bylaw. What, you know, what that means is there's some exceptions, which is maybe like a path, which you're going to get a fight if you try doing a path through their 30-foot no-touch. So it basically means you cannot do anything. You are literally restricted to the order of conditions that we have.
But when they say no-touch.
No-touch. You, you cannot go there. You can't build.
You can't mow it.
You can't mow, you can't walk, you can't.
So you can imagine a 50-foot, how?
But my question is.
How is this supposed to put commercial there?
No, there's no-touch, so if there's a no-touch zone, does that mean you can't walk on it?
Technically, no. I mean, technically, you can't do anything.
I would say no if he had to put a commercial building and it, like, it was supposed to be a walkway.
Yeah. I mean. So, so no-touch means there should be a fence there, and people shouldn't even be able to walk across that section, that 30 feet to get, to go fishing? If they wanted to go fishing, they'd have to walk around that no-touch zone?
I'm sure they walk through it, but if it was.
I'm sure they do, too. But I'm, I'm, I'm just, I, I, I'm not being facetious here. I don't. I always thought a no, I always thought a no-touch zone meant you can't develop this part of the property.
No, it means you can't use it, basically. It's, it's unusable. Essentially, the limited work shall be permanently identified with a split rail fence or equivalent approved by the Conservation Commission. So they put that condition in there to make sure you do not go beyond or into that no-touch. They want, they want a fence along the 30-foot no-touch. So basically, they want a split foot.
Fence says, don't go there.
Because you can't, cannot go beyond.
That's, I mean, I, I'm.
Would you clarify something?
I'm not being as dumb as I'm acting. I'm acting as dumb as I am.
No.
On this, you know.
Oh, it's just, it continuously just taking away your rights. And when I bought it in 2003, I could have went straight up to the wetlands. I could have bid, I could have built, you know, whatever I wanted in 2003. But in the past 20 years.
Yeah, yeah. You keep finding out that.
They went from 30 to 50 to no drive-throughs to, you know, it just, they just continuously to MassDOT wanting to use it for a detention basin. So, I mean, I, that's.
I hear you. You have, you are restricted.
I'm getting.
That being said, it still was 30,000 square feet, roughly. Actually, slightly under, according to you.
No, no, it's over.
So, oh, so it was the other way around. The other one had 27, and this was 31, or something.
One had.
Yeah, now they're both 30.
Between the two lots, he had 60,000, and they weren't, either one of them was exactly 30, and he needed both that.
Yep. So I have a question about this no-touch zone. Is it surrounding the entire perimeter?
It is not. No, no. It's the 30-foot from the wetland area, which is right.
So it's the flagged area.
That area here.
Oh, just the flagged area. What's the gray?
So, yeah, that's where.
This gray, we're leaving, maybe not over, this might be, this area we're just leaving untouched. We were, as part of our project, we were leaving this no work. You know, we were, we were, this doesn't, this area is useless at this point to us, unless we're forced to go with a different design.
So why would it be, I'm, just expl- so I guess I'm confused with the no-touches. The no-touch is that dashed line that says BVW 2, that that is the no-touch zone, or is it the, this?
BVW stands for vegetated.
That's the edge of the vegetated wetland.
What's the B stand for?
Border vegetated.
Border vegetated.
The demarcation of this would be the wetland, I mean, the, the no-touch zone.
It'd be the 30-foot no-touch, probably.
Right. But it goes around the, you have it shown.
Kind of easier to see on the plan.
It wasn't intend.
On the site plan, it's a little bit easier to see.
Thank you.
So that gray shaded area is a little bit drawn.
Well, the gray, the gray is meant to be left alone. You know, this is basically.
It's intended to leave alone, but.
It tends to not be grass.
It shouldn't be interpreted as that's all no-touch.
Correct.
Right. Right, that's, that's what I'm trying to make sure that this is clear, that I understand, you know, you're trying to show a hardship, but that's not clear on that what the actual hardship is. It makes it look like it's more than it actually is, because that's all gray. And the gray is the no-touch, quote-unquote, which is what appears to be the, on, on the thing. So I see this a little bit more clearly in this, I didn't-
On the site plan.
Mm-hmm. And if I go, and if I go to-
But-
I took it from last week, from the last week.
Oh, okay.
Would it be, Veronica, can I ask, would it be that, um, it, it's just too residential, you think, for that commercial strip? Because if you go down a little bit longer, like Pass Atlantic, that's all, there are multifamilies down there as well. So Cranbury Highway does kinda have that. Is it that the look and the design, him doing the garages, the three-family, is, is, could, could that be changed to make it-
No, not necessarily, no. I feel like, so you, you have your engineering building there, then there's the sign shop, which used to be the music shop, you've got the Elks, and you've got the fan club. So that area has a little bit of a commercial feel. And the bolt yard, it does have residences, residences back there, but you have to pass by it a little bit, and I feel like when you're going down there, if there's a residential on that lot that's a commercial strip, takes away from the people that own the commercial strip right on that side, that you're not actually looking to do business when there's a house. You're gonna look for a business where there's more business. So, oh, I'm sorry. So my, part of the point is that if you have a residential right beside two or three businesses, I think it detracts from their business, uh, position, because you're not gonna go by and necessarily look at a residential to do business, if you know what I mean. The more businesses you have right there, the more, the busier I think those businesses will be.
And, and there's the challenge, though, because, because of the, and this is the hardship.
The hardship.
If I do a commercial, Veronica, there's my no-touch.
And it's-
So this is where I have the commercial space. So I'm gonna pave this from sideline to sideline, right in this area, and then put a building in that, and that's what I'm forced to be, forced to do. It doesn't make sense, it, it, it doesn't make sense to put you in a commercial-
But you still have the option to put a single-family-
And we, and leave my 30-foot no-touch, correct, but, but, to her point, though, she doesn't-
Yeah, I would prefer, I would prefer-
She's saying she wants a commercial, so it's either-
Prefer to see a commercial building, for sure.
So it's either gonna be a commercial building with, in this, in this proximity, or it's gonna be a single-family with a garage, huge garage, out back, is what you're gonna see. Yeah, I agree.
Like I said, I think that would be a terrible spot for a commercial building. It's on a corner, people are going in and out, his realist, uh, his, um, your business looks like a residential house, maybe it was before.
Yeah.
It was.
I think that would be a terrible spot to put a commercial building, and then if you have spills or anything like that going into the wet, just, it, it's just not gonna work right there.
So, can, can I, I wanna ask, ask you a question. Doesn't, does this property connect to Old Glen Charlie Road through your other property? Like, could you potentially drive off of Old Glen Charlie to access this area?
You'd have to go through my property, my property I'm selling.
Yeah.
You'd have to grant another easement.
You couldn't potentially have an easement to create a commercial and have it easy in and out, if, just saying.
Yeah, oh, I, I could, I mean, there's no doubt, I mean, you would-
For, for safety purposes, if we're talking about-
Yeah, but you're, but-
Wouldn't that hit the, the no-touch in the back?
Who owns this thing numbered, numbered six?
Well, that's what I was saying about the no-touch, it's very, it's, that's actually not no-touch.
It was a 50.
What, what's that, sir?
You got 2854, and you got 2850, that's you, correct?
Mm-hmm. Six and eight, six-
Six, what's that six? Who owns that?
There's actually a, a structure on six that was torn down, and, uh, the people that own six actually just bought eight, and they bought six as well. They own both.
So that's not you. So the only way into 2850 is through 2854.
Correct. Or, or them, but-
So you gotta buy your way in through them, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well-
I mean, I guess, yeah. This is why, this is why I've sat on it for so long.
I would just, I just wanna, yeah, I just wanna make the point for the town, as far as the housing goes, and, and I don't need to tell you guys, that having a three-family, if you're a mom and you have two kids, this is what's necessary.
It's not a three-family.
Well, I'm sorry, a three-bedroom?
Yeah.
And having that, that's, that's what people are looking for, and they can't find it right now, especially rentals, um, you know, there's a lot of people actually losing their homes right now with the crisis. So I think having more rental income is, is, is good. I mean, rental properties for the town is just the best use. I don't think another commercial-
I agree, having more rentals, but I think in an appropriate area.
No, I, I get-
There's less brick and mortars right now, especially with COVID, people aren't opening stores, it's gonna be really hard for John, probably, to get a tenant in there.
I got Veronica's point, I mean, we've had instances where people are trying to do commercial development, and there are residences in commercially-zoned property blocking the commercial use.
Yeah.
Because they say now it's a residential neighborhood. So I get her, she, she's, she's got a, I understand her point, and I, and it has merit, whether, you know, whether I think that this is a good location, what you wanna do or not, I understand Veronica's, um, thought, and they do, and it, and it does have merit, um, whether it applies here or not.
I could tell you, I own, I own the building next door, which is basically a single-family home that was converted to an office. I own the fan club, um, not opposed to having a duplex diagonally across from me. The Elks is a large park, a large parking lot, and it's a, you know, and then you have the sign company and this little, this little wood frame construction, again. So it's wood frame construction, wood frame construction, fan club's wood frame construction, and the Elks is wood frame construction.
I would argue that-
So you wanna, do we wanna put a, do I wanna put a contractor bay yard?
Glen Charlie Road wants-
Do you really wanna see a contractor, contractor base? A, a steel building, is that what we, I mean, is that, if that's the vision, and, and that's what I'm forced to go, and this is kinda why I'm in front of the board, because I had to make, I had to make a decision to go with something. And, and this is what, and this is what I came up with, but I, it, it'll force me to go, it'll force me to go one way or the other.
You're in front of the board, you're asking for relief.
Exactly, yep.
Our rules say no, you can't do what you wanna do, and you're saying may I, and-
Exactly.
The board has the, has the, um, authority to say, yes, you may.
Right.
And it's up to the five people sitting here to decide whether they think that this is a higher and better use of the site, or, as you've implied, if we say no, we're not gonna grant you a two-family, then you can by right tomorrow walk into the building department and say, here's my plans, I'm putting in a six-bedroom house.
Either that, or files-
You absolutely have the right to do that.
Well, and we're here to be creative, too, if there's something, you know.
You're not, um-
And, and it's not, either, and, and it's, and I don't take it that you're coming here and saying, if you don't say yes, I'm, I'm doing something more horrible on the site.
So let, let me ask you this, thinking what you could possibly do with this, and I'm not sure, but, so you own the property beside it.
Mm-hmm.
What's the requirement for a three-family, if you combined the lot, you have 60,000 square feet, not that I wanna see residences, but I'm saying for what your use could be of the property, potentially.
He's already got a building on the lot beside it.
I know he does, but he could extend it perhaps with more apartments. I mean, what's the requirement for more apartments? Make that building what you're trying to do.
Because apartments in mixed use is a no, I believe, what's the use table? This isn't allowed use, a two-family isn't allowed use. So what you're asking me to do is an apartment in a mixed use, which apartment in a mixed use is a no. No, gas station, no, drive-through, no. I mean, you're telling me this is a commercial property, but 50-foot no-touch, it's like, you know, it, it, it's just, we're over-regulated, we're, we're over-regulated, and, and I'm forced to, and I got a single-family home out behind me, and I got wood frame construction around me, do I wanna do a commercial? I, I don't wanna do a commercial.
I'm just trying to throw you an idea, you're, you're trying to make the best use of your property, I don't know, move your office, make a three-family, then you got a three-family, you got all the uses of those, and you, I'm just saying, if you can't use it as next, it's just an idea.
Are you interpreting that there's a way to get it, as a, as a-
No, I don't know if it's, but it says, I was trying to read, I mean, don't, this is definitely not an okay for a variance if the three-family is not, not approved, if it's on the record, I'm just saying, to think of maybe a different use, that's all.
Or is it that-
So that you could have the maximum, um, income potential of your land.
It's just confusing to me, I guess, from a legal perspective, the fact that this could be fine for him to do a one-family, 10-bedroom house, but he's not able to do a two-family that's gonna provide two separate dwellings for a family here in town.
But it's, it's the zone, we can't change it.
And that's why we're here, we're here to ask that he gets the relief necessary.
But then everybody could come before us, and then why have this? That's, that's the thing, if that's something that the town wants to see, that needs to be brought up at the planning board to change the zoning.
Well, we can't do spot zoning, that would be spot zoning, you, you wouldn't wanna change the zoning on that one lot.
Right.
That would be spot zoning, spot zoning's not allowed.
All right, we meet the hardship requirement, we meet the uniqueness, we meet the no detriment to public good, so this is why this board is created, and it's created for the instances like this, where you have the only one-way section upon how many miles of Cranbury Highway, and, and, and I'm in a strip commercial area, that's, I could either do a commercial or a single-family home, but you can't do a two-family home. It, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, this is why this board's created, because this, this, this table, this book, is not created for every single lot, in every single scenario, in the town of Wayne. This book is created as a guideline, and that's why they created Zoning Board Appeals, to allow the relief, to say, what makes sense? That's what I'm asking this board, what makes sense? Tell me what you would like to see here, 'cause I'm gonna build it, I'm gonna build it. Commercial, I marketed it, I didn't get a great, great, a great look at, yeah, I'd love to put something there, no one, I, I said, tell me what fits with it.
Who's your tenant on commercial, I mean, who's your perceived tenant? Do you have an, I-
If I did commercial?
Theoretically, theoretically speaking, um, if, if, if magically you could create-
I'd love to put a couple of thousands with a gas station.
A gas station?
I'd put, I'd move combies from over here right over there. I would love to see that.
But I don't think it'll fit, I don't think you have-
It's, it's close, I would do a bank, but I'm not allowed to do a drive-through. I, I would do a light commercial. What's light commercial? That's what I'm, I'm, I'm stuck with a light commercial, I can't do a, you know, you, can't do a mobile one, you know what I mean? I, I could, but then they, they look, they look and they say, well, there's 40,000 car trips on Cranbury Highway. Wait, you're on a one-way. You only have 20,000 car trips. I wanna be over here, I wanna be over here, I don't wanna be right here with the one-way section. Traffic-wise, I'm perfect, I'm great, I'm on a one-way section. I'm not pulling in front of traffic, you, you see that green light, when it turns green, you turn red, you go. The only thing you gotta worry about is the guy's coming straight at ya, the New Yorkers coming straight at ya, that don't, that are coming down the one-way. That's the only, you know, cautious thing that we have to worry about on this, so-
Maybe you should come before us for a drive-through. I just fail to see where it's not hitting the statutory requirements.
No.
And if, if you can point us directly to, you know, it's a unique lot, obviously we talked about everything there, in-depth conversation regarding the hardship, desire of relief should be granted, substantial detriment, there's no detriment, in my opinion, regarding a two-family here. And the intent of the bylaws is to create, you know, what we want for the town, if that's the one you're hinging on, that you don't think it should be residential there, um, you know, maybe you guys can point to that, but I think it hits everything statutorily for variance.
I've asked for opinions from everybody but our town planner. Ken, do you have any comments on this? Sorry, I'm just trying to get-
Yeah.
You should ask him first.
You should've asked him.
I just, I just wanted that on the record about the statutory requirements.
I wanted to give everybody, I, I didn't, you know, go ahead.
Yeah, this is a problem you get when, when you have old development subdivisions from many years ago, and, and you have a, 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 a patchwork of, of development that doesn't necessarily fit any particular direction. I think the highest and best use, if it was commercial, would probably be contractors' units on the site, uh, but it, it doesn't give you a lot of room for maneuverability around in the, in, because of the no-touch zone. And that's something that bothers me a lot, too, that that no-touch zone applies in, uh, in some very valuable commercial property areas, that, uh, reduces the efficiency of development on those. One of the things I wanted to, uh, to note, or maybe ask for confirmation from the attorney is, uh, it seems to me that there's a, a variance that's, that's required for the frontage and the area of the lot, for the use, under the, the Article 6, but under Article 3, there's also a requirement for a special permit for the two-family. So this would be a combination of a variance and a special permit for the-
That's correct, yep.
The project, the way it's, it's shown here now.
So you got 150, you need 200 on the frontage. You got 30, you need 45 on the lot size. So the lot size, you're saying that's-
That's de minimis, I, I don't think that, that the size makes much of a difference. It's really how you go, how you go about making the most efficient use of the property, like, as you say, you can call it the highest and best use, or the most efficient use of the property.
Yeah.
Would be the, uh, the, the two-family.
That's, I, I see it as the highest and best use, personally, knowing the area and-
I just, yeah, I, I just think, again, I go back, I'm the lawyer, so I'm looking at statutory requirements, I fail to see where it doesn't meet it. And I know variances don't come often in front of you and get approved, and so.
So-
Go ahead, Veronica.
Now I have a question, Ken, that you mentioned, the frontage. The frontage for commercial use is what, the requirement?
150.
150, and there's 120 on the lot.
There's 150 on the lot.
We have 150.
There's 150, okay. So what, so there's 200 requirement for a two-family, that's what you're saying?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that's what you said, okay.
It's on the, um, on the bottom of this, so single-family's 150, 30,000 square feet, two-family's 45,200, and commercial's 30,000, 150. So, it just-
But what you're looking for relief from us, us, is the lot size from 45 to 30, and the frontage from 200 to 150.
Right, and it's still a buildable lot, that, that's, that's, I guess, as, as Mr. Buckland was saying, it's de minimis, because I know you're looking at the number, but, but regardless, it's a buildable lot.
As a one-family, you got it by right, I get it, I see that.
And, and commercials.
It's clear as day, as clear as a bell to me. As a one-family, you could, you could build what you've got here and say it's a single-family home, and put a door between the garage to the, either end of it, and-
Yep. Put a nice big garage out, out back.
And I, and I think the fact that you owned a lot right beside it does give you some room to maneuver in terms of use.
Well, he's, he's using this budding lot, he's granting himself permission to put the septic system on that lot.
Mm-hmm.
Get it further from the river, from the water. He is taking advantage of it from, to, to a large degree.
My, my point was, if he decides to do commercial, he has more, because he owns a property beside it, just like, because he's trying to put the two-family, he's using the property beside it, the same could be said if it was used as a commercial.
Well, I think we've waxed redundant. Is there anything more to be said by anybody, board member, applicant, applicant's attorney? Is it time, is it time to move to a vote, and let's just vote it up and down, or either he's gonna build a two-family with a blessing, or he's gonna build a single-family with a blessing? It's very apparent the lot's gonna be built on, because the pressure has been kinda put on by the state, um, and the town keeps making moves to, um, further restrict, further restrict, further restrict. So the applicant has made it crystal clear to me, I don't know if anybody else gets it, that he's gonna get what he can on the site while he can, be it a two-family or a single-family, um, and he's gonna get as many bedrooms on the site as the septic's gonna permit him. I guess the septic would be the limiting factor on the number of bedrooms, would that be correct, or?
Yeah.
And is six the bedrooms, the maximum number of bedrooms you can get?
I can go as many as I want.
You get the septic, you could, you get-
Plenty, plenty of land area, huh, that's on.
Pardon me?
I said plenty of land area over there.
You got enough land area to go with more than six bedrooms?
Perfect spot for a halfway house there, you know?
I don't, I don't think-
We could do that.
Hey, there you go.
Yeah, we could do that.
I don't think a boarding house is allowed, I don't think a boarding house is allowed, but a, a single-family with, um, either a big family, or, you know, I mean, nobody's, my, my, mine's a ten-bedroom house, and I'm, I'm, I'm the only relative that lives there out of the seven people, I'm related to me, and nobody else is, um, that doesn't make it less of a single-family house. So, I get it, um, I just don't see, I don't see us getting anywhere with the discussion, I don't see anybody changing, um, questions or positions, or, um, I don't see any benefit in restricting the number of bedrooms as a multi-family, so at, at this point, I think it's prudent to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring this to a vote. Either we're gonna, either we're gonna say yes to your plan, or we're gonna say no to it, and, um, if we say no, I hope it would be without prejudice, but I can't even guarantee that.
And we have the relief if necessary.
Pardon me?
I, I just, again, I would, I would ask if someone denies it to really try to talk about what we aren't hitting on the, the variance require-
The basis of the denial.
On the variance requirements required by the law, that's what I would, uh, just ask by the board.
Well-
Did I make a motion to close?
I accept that motion, is there a second to close the public hearing, the, this portion of the meeting to the public?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the meeting to the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously decided to close the public hearing, and therefore, we should move to a vote, either to approve or disapprove, grant, not grant? Who would like to make a motion?
I'd make a, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, grant as presented.
With standard conditions?
Standard conditions, yes.